Thanks for. Why the delay?
Good question.
Let's find that out. Twice.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Town Council of North Bramford, Connecticut, to order on Tuesday, April 16th at 6:38. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Palladino.
Here.
Counselor Zampano.
Yeah.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is minutes of the previous meetings. Do I hear a motion to approve the April 26 budget workshop minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next one is April 2nd, 2024, WPCA and Town Council meeting at 6:30.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The next one is April 2nd, 2024, Budget Hearing Fiscal 2425 at 7:30 PM.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain? Okay. Next one is April 4th, 2024, Special Meeting of Town Council and Police Commission at 5:30.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Next one is April 4th, 2024, Budget Workshop at 6:30.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
I should have a few more abstentions here. Walt should be an exception. And...
Nope.
No, Jeff was there.
I'm the next one, the ninth.
Okay. Next one is April 9th, 2024, Budget Workshop.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, now on to the regular Town Council meeting. First one is Community Events and Presentations. And we have two proclamations, so I will read the first one here. First proclamation is for Earth Day. Whereas the first Earth Day was celebrated on April 22nd, 1970, with the goal of inspiring environmental awareness and encouraging the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our nation's natural resources. And whereas it is the responsibility of each of us to safeguard the environment by recognizing that all human life depends upon the earth and upon one another for our mutual existence, well-being, and development. And whereas the steps we can take to protect and preserve our natural environment through education partnerships and positive actions should be encouraged in the town of North Bramford. And whereas the citizens of the town of North Bramford are committed not only to the protection and preservation of our environment, but also to the restoration of ecosystems and habitat. And whereas the town of North Bramford citizens, staff, and elected officials are working closely with federal, state, and local governments and with non-governmental organizations to develop and implement regulations and ordinances specifically designed to preserve and improve the town of North Bramford's fragile ecosystems and the quality of life therein. And whereas the town of North Bramford proudly recognizes all who participate in Earth Day for their dedication to taking a proactive role in shaping the future of our environment and in protecting the town of North Bramford's precious natural resources. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of North Bramford, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2024, as Earth Day in the town of North Bramford, and urge all of our citizens to be mindful of local, state, and national laws which protect our environment and to join in efforts to preserve the beauty of wonder of the land, skies, and water of the earth in all its diversity. Dated the 16th day of April 2024 and authorized by my signature affixed, Rosemarie Angeloni, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Bill Servistano of the Recycle Committee. It's our chairperson, Mary Bigelow, and we're here tonight to promote Earth Day. It'll be this Saturday at Wall Field. We, the last few years, we've been doing it in conjunction with Little League Opening Day. We have a captured crowd that morning. As soon as the ceremony is over, there'll be an announcement asking the people to come by and see us, answer any questions they have. We're gonna have some hot coffee there and we're gonna give six packs of, as we did last couple of years, little six packs of sunflower seeds for a starter to take home. It's the first hundred people have sunflowers. So, like the council did in the past, to stop by and see what we're doing. Mary, wanna say something?
Yes. Bill has worked very hard on this, and I hope to see every one of you there.
Thank you. Let's do a photo. Let's go up there and do a photo.
Do I get everybody else behind you again for the last one or no? Okay, stand up, like behind me on the same page. That's beautiful. Up in, I can't see, Craig, I can't see you.
I try.
Sorry. They have a mouse that's running on a wheel. Time to do it.
Okay. Our next proclamation is for National Therapy Animal Day. There are thousands of pet partner therapy animals teams serving in communities across the United States. And whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day. And whereas scientific research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system. And whereas therapy animal teams in the town of North Bramford play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond. And whereas therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those approaching end of life. And whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. And whereas we encourage more pet owners to consider becoming pet partners, volunteers to help our community by creating greater access to meaningful therapy animal visits. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of North Bramford, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2024, as National Therapy Animal Day in the town of North Bramford, and encourage our citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Further, I publicly salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation. Dated the 16th day of April 2024 and authorized by my signature affixed heretofore, Rosemarie Angeloni, Mayor. And I believe we have a therapy dog here. We could have used them at our last several sessions. And, um, this is Rose Lynch. What's your dog?
Charlie.
Charlie.
Charlie. That's like a nice dog. How old is Charlie? Ah.
But I, can I sit with the dog?
Nah, it's okay. Getting up?
Can I sit with Charlie?
I have a bone retriever, so.
Charlie.
Just walk it.
Wow. Captain Pope, you qualify for that. Charlie. Hey, Rick. Kind of going down.
A little crunchy.
Oh, do you? Those are great.
Oh, I got Toby.
Oh, yeah, man.
Yeah, he's a lot of therapy today.
He record, giving me therapy.
Thank you for bringing Charlie.
Bye, Charlie.
Bye, Charlie.
Charlie kinda looks like a polar bear. Probably can stay. He's probably better behaved than half of people. Oh, I like that. Oh, that's cool.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything under Community Events and Presentations? I see the Totucket Historical Society is here, so they must have something to tell us. So come on up to the microphone and...
Do I need to give my information? Mary Ellen Delela, co-president of the Historical Society Totucket. You can introduce us.
Donna Summers, also co-president of Totucket Historical Society. We both live on Old Post Road in different houses.
So you say.
But we do shout and we hear each other from afar. Anyway, first of all, we would like to thank you for the recent ARPA fund check that we're not sure we received yet, but we're waiting by the post office window and we're going to check tomorrow. But thank you so much. We really appreciate that. And that was for general funds. And now back to the Little Red Schoolhouse. Remember that structure on Old Post Road, everyone? Right near the library? Well, I received a call a few weeks ago from Andy Bazuto, who is interested in having an event for us, so we're having it. And it's going to be the Kentucky Derby.
Ah.
And that's why we have ducks. And all the proceeds will go to the Little Red Schoolhouse. The Derby is going to be on May 4th from 4 o'clock on. I mean... Oh, May 4th at 3 o'clock PM. I get too excited, you know? I have a therapy duck with me, so I'll be fine. Anyway, and so he's going to have a cookout that people can participate in. There are prizes. You can buy a duck for $10 and possibly get a $100 gift certificate. $100 ducks, a dinner for $4 or $400, and businesses can sponsor for $500 a duck and have a happy hour for your company. So there may be additional prizes, and it's going to be fun. You can wear a hat, you can decorate, you can have a little fun. So please join us. I will see, I will give you these flyers. You have to call MillPond or do whatever.
So what's the premise of the ducks? So what's gonna happen with the ducks?
So the ducks are going to, they are going to swim because ducks swim, guys.
Should we run this by wetlands?
Yeah, I know. We'll catch our ducks.
Okay.
They nap. Don't worry. Don't worry. We're very careful. We preserve. You don't, you know? And so each duck will have a number. So for example, if Thomas Sampaiano, for example, has a $100 duck, he will have a number, and he will watch his little duck go down the stream, and hopefully it will come out first. And then you will be dining in MillPond.
No PDD ducks, Tom.
You. You're going to go for the $500 one. Have all your friends join you for a gathering. So I look forward to that.
I would just say, Tom, I would do the 500, but nobody would show up.
Really? I'll drive.
If you work from home, it's just a happy hour for you. So you can go on the MillPond website and see this. There's a little QR code scan that you can make reservations on, or you can call MillPond.
Is it regulation-sized ducks?
And it's a patio party, just so everybody knows.
I ordered something.
There may be some hat decorating for Mary Ellen. She likes grass.
No, I'm sorry. The teacher.
May the fourth be with you. Great idea.
Thank you.
Is there a rain date or because it's ducks, it's okay? No rain date, okay.
So are they gonna do this on the river?
They are, we are waiting to do this on the river, and there will be picnic on the patio. You can buy a ticket for the picnic lunch, and children under eight, I believe, are free because they don't eat all that much. And then you can go inside for the actual Kentucky Derby. It's children eight and up or 14, oh, seven and under.
Okay. All right. So the next item on the agenda is finalization of the fiscal 2425 operating budget. But unfortunately, we cannot finalize tonight. We are gonna take some actions on things. There, the first item on the agenda is solar credit allocations. And Anthony, do you wanna just give us an update on where we stand with this?
Yeah, the invoices from the UI arrived at 5 after 4 today. So we didn't even print them off yet, to be honest with you, to look at them and to kinda analyze where we are between the Town and Board of Ed as far as the credits go. If you recall, when we started the solar project two years ago, we had to give the third party that owns and runs the field access to our accounts at UI so they can determine how many kilowatt hours we use, which they then use to bill us for 11.95 cents per kilowatt hour. They need access to get that information. And in the eyes of UI, you can't have multiple people having access to your account. So we rescinded that. Mike and I were on the phone yesterday, or today, yesterday, with our guy from UI, and, you know, I was kinda getting, not a runaround, but a delayed action, and then I, Mike intervened, and suddenly we got statements. So we're hoping to have an answer, a number for you guys as to what the actual solar credits are to date and the bills. So on our side, as well as the Board of Ed's side, the electricity accounts are out of whack because in their case, they haven't gotten a bill for Jerome Harrison or the auditorium for this fiscal year at all. So that's what the bills we got today. We got our bills, they got their bills. We're gonna analyze them and see what the deal is. We have the Altus people who have been very patient. They were owed money back from last December of '22, and we haven't paid them. Board of Ed paid them, I think, one or two months, but they're, you know, behind on them as well. So bottom line is, I don't have an answer for you tonight because, again, the bills just came in at 5 after 4 today from the UI. So I guess table it until next week or whenever you guys wanna...
Well, we have to finalize by next Tuesday.
Okay.
So, um, unless we meet earlier, but I mean, if you just got them today, I don't know how soon you would have results. So on the UI bills, are there actually credits that are shown on the...
There's the UI charge and then the solar credit on the bottom. So that there's Part A, Part B, and then Part C is the Altus bill.
Which is the solar company.
Exactly. So each account now will have three items, basically. You'll have the electricity bill from UI, you'll have the solar credit identified, and you'll have the Altus bill. So that if you look at it five years from now and say, what did we actually derive from that solar field, you'd be able to look at those accounts and identify them specifically. Versus having it all blended into one electricity account, you'll never know five years from now, was it a good deal, bad deal? How much did we actually gain from the, you know, the whole solar project? So I've created sub-accounts in the departments that have UI accounts, whether it's the library, fire, public work, not public works, police, and the old police station, some of our sewer accounts, streetlights. So you won't just see electricity. You'll see electricity, which is the UI bill, then you'll see the solar credit account, then you'll see the Altus account, the people that run and manage the field.
So are there additional credits besides what shows up on the bill? I mean, is there more credit due to us than what shows on the bill?
I have, I gotta look at them, to be honest with you. What's on the bill should capture everything.
Okay.
So I'll make a spreadsheet of everything we got so far, and then kinda tell us where we are, you know, to date, from December of '22 to today, where we are, and we can come up with a number and hopefully put this to bed. By June 30, my goal is to be in sync so that come July 1, we're one month at a time. We get the bill, we get the credit, we get the Altus, all in one month. Book it in one month, and we're clean going forward. So by June 30, 24, hopefully this will all be a memory.
So is there an electric bill every month that's paid by all the departments?
We have not paid them. We didn't get the bills.
So we haven't paid an electric bill since...
For some accounts, yeah. We get shut-off notices, and the guy from UI, Greg, said, ignore, I'm throwing them away. I know it's a whole, we're working the bugs out of the system. So between us and the Board of Ed, we get, weekly, we get shut-off notices because we have bills that haven't been paid because we haven't got the bills. So we can't pay something without having the bill in our hands, you know, so...
Why wasn't this a red flag, though? When they come in over a period of time, right? I mean, I'm in the country, I apologize.
No, that was my question.
They're, as they came in, we didn't think we had the...
They didn't come in.
They didn't come in. They didn't come in. And this whole thing with the Altus...
We got the shut-off notice, right?
Yeah.
So when those came in.
Yeah, and we called the guy from UI and said, what's the story? And then it led to the whole thing about, oh, you gave your rights to the bills to Altus. I said, well, we did because at that time, they needed access.
And then you called Altus, I'm assuming, to see what the deal was, and they just didn't get back to us?
It's not Altus, it's UI.
So was Altus paying the bill?
It was on 4.
No.
No.
Nobody's paying.
Nobody's paying. UI hasn't been paid, Altus hasn't been paid.
And nothing's been booked. So right now, all the electric accounts that the solar field...
Right, is on.
Is on.
Has not been...
Are kind of on hold, really.
Well, so the current numbers in the budget are wrong because we don't have them. There's
nothing in there. So the Board of Ed doesn't have things booked. We don't have things booked. We don't have the credits. Plus, there's also bills for last fiscal year because it goes, it went online December of '22. So from December of '22 to June of '23, which we have closed, is part of this bill. So those are gonna have to come into this year.
What a mess.
I see.
You said some bills have been paid? You said some bills were paid by the Board of Ed?
The Board of Ed started paying the Altus bill for December of '22 and January of '23.
So they ended up getting some bills and they paid them?
We just got the Altus bills. The Altus bills came in play in November of '23. We got an email from these people saying, hey, you owe us $150,000. I'm like, that's interesting. For what? And they said, oh, we have an arrangement with you guys. They're based on the kilowatt hours. You owe us 11.95 cents per kilowatt hour. Okay. Found the agreement. Agreement is black and white, 11.95. Who are you billing? Well, they had this wrong email address. We never got any bills. So as in November of '23, when this thing came to light, that's when we've been going back and forth between Altus, UI, and then, like I said, as of 5 after 4 today, we got an onslaught of bills from, I think it was '23 into '24.
This is a great look. We gotta figure this out.
What kind of communication was there? Was it face-to-face on the phone or emails?
Emails.
So here we are today. So what's, how are we gonna resolve it?
So I'm gonna take all the bills and come up with a spreadsheet to say, okay, this is what we're gonna charge the library electricity account. We're gonna charge them for the UI piece. We're gonna give them the credit for the UI solar credits, and we're gonna give them the bill for the Altus. So there'll be three additional hits that, like I said, come July 1, that'll be on a monthly basis. Boom, boom, boom. But we gotta do a catch-up now to say, from the beginning till today, how much are we gonna charge Lauren at the library?
We just have to expedite because of the budget.
Yeah, like I said, and that's what...
Wait, I'm gonna expedite the payment, just expedite getting it figured out.
Right, that's what I, that's what I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there, so is there like an account? There's an account for electric, right?
Correct.
So there's money in that account that hasn't, that's just sitting there?
The June 30 money, it laps.
It's budgeted.
Right. If you look at, if you look at your budget book, like, take the library, for example. If you look at her electricity account...
She thought she was getting a bargain.
You look at two years' historical information...
The solar fields were really doing well for her.
Solar is a good thing.
Yeah.
Look at the place.
In fact, Reynolds Beer's House wanted to get her bills because she was getting nothing.
So that money is still sitting there?
No, June 30 laps.
June 30 of '23.
So that money's been spent?
No. It's just, it's all about the fund balance.
It goes back into the fund balance.
If you look at electricity, 25, 18... If you look at electricity, twenty-five, eighteen, thirty-two, only spending fifteen last year, because it didn't get hit.
Yeah.
So you have an artificial surplus last year, and you're gonna lose this year, you're gonna be over budget this year in electricity, artificially surplus last year.
Okay, so to be continued.
Just to understand, some of the problems that we're dealing with, I mean, it's been a big headache. And part of the reason is, is that we are the only solar farm property-related one of these in the entire state. So we're breaking ground, and we're breaking it with our faces, apparently. Because, you know, we're, yeah, I mean, we're the guinea pigs on this, on how this works. I don't know if anybody's ever gonna end up doing it the same way, maybe not. But that's why all these problems are, there's just no roadmap for it, and it's been a problem since we, since we started, but I think we're?
So the solar field in North Haven, upset team, that's not a farm project?
It's, it's, it's not one where there's a farm involved, who is also receiving benefit from it.
So this particular one, Pages?
Right.
Maple Tree Farm? That, that's how this came about, that it had to be an agriculture municipality conjunction. So Pages is supposed to be getting no bills on electricity. They're supposed to have the electric free, which I understand is not the case.
So they've been getting bills?
They have, yes.
Have they been paying?
All right, so another question to ask here for the town, is have we incurred any, any fines, or any additional charges? Because of our penalty, or being delayed? So no penalties, no increased percentage? There's no adverse effect? We're a hundred percent about that? And that's important, because if they've screwed this up, not us, then we're gonna go back and add the credits, right?
We're not gonna pay a penny of?
Okay.
Above what we're supposed to.
Okay.
Mike, I'm assuming the answer is yes, I hope it's yes. But on these credits, they're actually showing us on the meter, what the meter was last month, what it is this month, and we're not going by what they just send us and say, this is your credit. We're, we actually see it on the meter, there's actually meter readings showing what we get from that solar farm? Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is revaluation. So this has been a really difficult budget year. You know, the budget that was presented to us was a very high increase in our mill rate. But we are up for revaluation, that is in the process. And so I thought it would be a good idea if our town assessor kind of just walked us through, and what we can see is going to happen, because this is a year earlier than what we were scheduled. And that's not by our design, that's from the state telling us that we have to, we're, instead of five years, we're at four years. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to Dave Ambrose right now.
Good evening. Before I reveal our next year's assessments, I want to briefly discuss the process. Phase one will kick off next week, when our revow company mails data notices to our taxpayers. Our taxpayers slash homeowners will have an opportunity to identify any data discrepancies that may exist. Phase two, include inspections. The state, over the past five years, has a lot of assessors to do hybrid revaluations. A hybrid revow includes a combination of data mailers and inspections. We definitely inspect every property that's sold within the last year. We also will inspect any properties upon any homeowner's request. I paid very close attention to the real estate market over the past three years, in anticipation of our revow. I thought by now, the, the numbers would revert back to our two thousand and twenty levels, but that hasn't happened. And I have been in constant contact with dozens of assessors, appraisers, I ran my own numbers, obviously. And I could confidently say that I expected at least, the very least, a thirty percent increase in the grand list. That translates to a three hundred and eighty million dollar increase. This is my eighth revow. And this is the highest percentage increase I have ever experienced. And that includes my twenty-three years in the Haven, five in Thomaston, and ten here in North Branford. And I went to look back at the last three revows that I was a part of here in North Branford, for comparison purposes. In two thousand and ten, we experienced a thirty-one million dollar decrease. In two thousand and fifteen, we, we experienced a decrease of thirty-four million dollars. In two thousand and twenty, we had an increase of fifty-two million dollars, or four point one four percent. Now, I thought that number was pretty hefty. This number is six times that amount. You know, our taxpayers in North Branford are pretty sharp. Yeah, and I, I think they understand what the property values are. So they're not gonna be really surprised when they open up that notice next October. In ninety-eight, the state reduced the revow cycle from ten years to five years in order to avoid any of these big shifts in property value. Usually, it works, but, I mean, this is really unprecedented. Massachusetts, for example, revalues every single year to avoid this kind of thing. So, again, it's a three hundred and eighty million dollar increase in the grand list. It's simple as that. And, and these numbers are spot-on. I mean, we can expect at least a thirty percent increase.
Can you do an example of a three hundred thousand dollar home?
Yeah, a three hundred thousand dollar assessment?
Thirty percent, so you're?
A three hundred thousand dollar assessment will be like four twenty next year.
Okay, that's, as an example, so everybody understands.
I, but I have a question. You say the numbers are spot-on, but they didn't do the revow yet.
I mean, every town that I know have had at least a thirty percent increase in values, and not one town experienced any increase under thirty percent. And I read numbers myself, and I, I know, we have tons of sales. We have hundreds of sales from two thousand and one forward, and, and I can safely say, I'm confident.
Okay.
Very confident.
So this is the assessed, which is already, it's at seventy percent of the appraised value, so this is what you're taxed on?
Right, so if you look at the value increase, opposed to the assessment increase, it's over a half a billion dollar increase in value. Substantial.
So that four hundred and twenty thousand dollar home that was, that's been assessed, we only pay seventy percent?
Now that is the assessed.
You want the market value of that, that property, you would divide that four twenty by point seven. And, you know, people ask me a lot during my, my time as an assessor, they say, Dave, I'm looking at a huge increase in my, in my assessment. Am I looking at a huge increase in my taxes? And I say, normally, or typically, the mill rate is reduced to compensate for any really big increase in, in assessed value, in, you know, in theory, anyways.
We've got the perfect storm. Basically.
The reassessment of the mill rate is gonna be after any type of increase we have to do due to debt and other?
Right.
Increases from this year, but intrinsically, it should go down because of the widening of the gap. You're gonna pay more, no matter how you look at it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now, we're gonna get into the general government? Budget? And, so, Anthony had, based on our two workshops that we had, and the increase, you know, most of the, most of the line, the motions are for decreases, there are a few increases in items. But this is all stuff that we have talked about, either starting at our April fourth meeting, and then, again, our April ninth meeting. So these are all, all of these have been discussed at prior meetings, and these amounts have been discussed. Actually, I checked with Lisa Valenti, our town clerk, to see once if we can group the motions, that we don't necessarily have to go one by one. So we're just gonna do it in groups of five to go down here. I'll just read where the fund is coming out of, the department number, the object number, and the decrease amount. And if there's anything, after I read them, if anyone has any questions and doesn't wanna have it as part of the group, we can take it out and just vote on the group as we go along. So the first one, the first group is, from Mayor and Council, Fund, uh, to Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-One-O-Three, Object Number Five-One-Six-Two-O, a reduction of three thousand dollars. Mayor and Council, Fund Number One Thousand, Department Forty-One-O-Three, Object Number Five-Five-Five-Zero-Zero, a reduction of five hundred and forty-five dollars. Finance, Fund One Thousand, Department Four-One-One-Seven, Object Five-Five-Nine-Nine-Zero, a reduction of five thousand dollars. Central Services, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-One-Twenty-Nine, Five-Five-Five-Zero-Zero, a reduction of one thousand five hundred dollars. And Central Services, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-One-Twenty-Nine, Object Fifty-Seven-Two-Hundred, a reduction of forty-five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
See a motion?
Second.
Motion's been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, second by Marie Counselor Diamond. Any discussion?
I just ask, are we sure we're gonna get some free training from UNICEF? We are sure of that, that's why we're reducing that training amount?
Anthony has been in touch with them, and we also, there is a line item in the budget, also that we pay UNICEF. There's a fifty thousand dollar? Yes, but we've also not had, um, our training that we have had has not been up to par. And so that was, that was the basis for asking for more training, but not at cost, like they owe it to us.
I know we need it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The next one is Assessor, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-One-Thirty-One, Object Fifty-Three-Five-Ten, a reduction of one thousand eight seventy-five. Technology, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-One-Forty-Three, Line Fifty-Five-Nine-Ninety, a reduction of one thousand five hundred. Planning Department, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-One-Fifty-Three, Line Fifty-Five-Nine-Ninety, a reduction of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Benefits, Insurance, and Other, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-One-Ninety-Nine, Line Fifty-Two-O-Twenty, a reduction of twenty thousand dollars. Police, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-One, Line Fifty-Four-Three-O-One, a reduction of four thousand four hundred. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next one is Police, Department, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-One, Line Fifty-Two-Three Hundred. Retirement? This was supposed to be changed to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars here. This, this is for correction in using a? Well, it's how they figured the pension between defined benefit and defined contribution, and this is only on overtime wages. So it's a reduction of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Fire, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-Three, Line Fifty-One-Six-Twenty, a reduction of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Fire, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-Three, Line Fifty-Six-Nine Hundred, a reduction of forty-five hundred dollars. Fire, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-Three, Line Fifty-Four-Three Hundred, a reduction of five thousand. Fire, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-Three, Line Fifty-Three-Two Hundred, a reduction of two thousand five hundred. Do I hear a motion? Motion's been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, second by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Okay, the next is Fire, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-Three, Line Fifty-Five-Nine-Ninety, a reduction of five thousand seven hundred. Fire Department, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-Three, Line Fifty-Seven-Three Hundred, a reduction of five thousand dollars. Fire Department, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-Three, Line Fifty-Two-Three Hundred, a reduction of thirty-five thousand oh sixty. And Fire Department, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-Three, Line Fifty-Seven-Three Hundred, a reduction of thirty-five thousand dollars. And Ambulance, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-O-Nine, Line Fifty-Eight-Nine-Ten, a reduction of one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Do I hear a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Abelson, seconded by Counselor Palladino. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The next is Building Department, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Two-Thirteen, Line Fifty-Five-Nine-Ninety, a reduction of eight thousand dollars. Public Works, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Three-O-One, Line Fifty-Six-Two-Ninety, a reduction of thirty-seven thousand dollars. Library, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Five-O-One, Line Fifty-Six-Two-Twenty, a reduction of three thousand. Library, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Five-O-One, Line Fifty-Five-Nine-Ninety, a reduction of two thousand. Library, Fund One Thousand, Department Forty-Five-O-One, Line Fifty-Six-Four-Twenty, a reduction of five thousand. Uh, do I hear a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. The next one, okay, this is also a correction, this is for contingency. This amount should actually be four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Well, the one I had in my folder, that's the one I'm using, that's not what's on here. So that's what I'm going by.
So it's four twenty-five now?
It's, it's four twenty-five, because in checking, so the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars was the correction in the formula error. And then, normally, in contingency, we start off at a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year. And the first big subtraction from that is for the admin increases of sixty thousand. first big subtraction from that is for the admin increases of $60,000, but that is already figured into the number that Anthony has set aside for contract negotiations, so there was another $60,000 added to that number. So, we'll be starting off the year at $115,000 in contingency, just for our regular things, not including contract. So, Contingency Reserve, Fund 1,000, Department 9,800, Line 59510, a reduction of $425,000. Do I hear a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So, that takes care of all of our decreases, and now we have several increases. First one is...
Excuse me, Rose.
Yes?
The total, just be clear, the total amount of decrease is $1,025,000.
Twenty-seven.
$1,027,205?
I, I, my sheet doesn't say that, so...
Neither does mine, I just wanna be clear.
But this, this one's correct.
I'm, so what...
Anthony?
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay, $1,027.
Ninety-five thousand in there.
Okay. Just make sure, be clear.
Okay. Great, so, so what was the total decrease?
$1,027,205.
Right, right. Two oh five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um... Please, we have put one right, I don't think you did that one either.
Yeah, no, I, I just saw that. So, there's one other one.
Number twenty-seven.
A, a decrease, this, this number's not correct either on here.
What is this, the last one, number twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's our capital improvements, it's gonna be funded through the operating budget, so this is a decrease of $95,000, and it's for a, it's for police vehicles that will be funded out of the account that they have their road duty, the funds that they go in for road duty, which Anthony had told us has approximately $190,000 in it.
Right, I thought it was six, I, actually, I thought it, I thought it was sixty-three two fifty when we talked about it. Where did it go to ninety-five?
We're, we're taking, we're doing a car, basically a car and a half, we're funding out of that account.
Okay, so...
And the other, because on the, because on the capital, we had to, we had to come up with dollars.
No, we only talked about a car, not a car and a half, so now we're talking about a car and a half. So, we actually originally talked about sixty-three two fifty.
Right, but he's, he's still getting funding for the two cars.
I know, because he's taking it out of the...
Right.
Right, so, just be clear.
So, it's, it's helping reduce the mill rate by not funding it.
No, I'm good with it.
By, we're using the other account. Believe me, we had to look everywhere for, to try and get this mill rate down.
How many?
So, it's a reduction of $95,000, and I will tell you that I did have a conversation with the chief prior to all of this happening, to make sure that he was comfortable with this, and he was, he was fine with it. He said, um, we could do that. So, thank you, Chief Lovelace, um, for this. So, do I hear a motion for a $95,000 reduction?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay, one abstention. Motion carries. So, increases now will go to Mayor and Council, Fund 1,000, Line 4103, or Department 4103, Line 55990, an increase of $300. Central Services, Fund 1,000, Department 4129, Line 54301, an increase of $10,000. Public Works, Fund 1,000, Department 4301, Line 51620, an increase of $3,200. And Operating Transfers, Fund 1,000, Department 9,900, Line 59020. Now, wait a minute, this is, this, this one is out.
Yeah, we, we killed that one.
Yes, this is...
With what we were doing.
Yes, no, 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 we, it's, we're, we're...
Killed the move, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not part of the motion.
All right.
It's not a, it's not an increase, so it was just the first three that I read.
Yes.
Three hundred, ten thousand and thirty-two hundred. So, do I hear a motion?
Um...
The motion, the motion's up.
So, it's...
Just the three.
So, the increases were Mayor and Council, for $300, it was to correct a correction, uh, uh, error in the contractual thing in the, in our budget book, it was stated incorrectly. Facilities Maintenance out of Central Services, it's $10,000, it's a placeholder, it's for maintenance on the old police building, um, on there. And then the Public Works for $3,200 increase, it's for their part-time labor, and it's to increase the wage per hour from sixteen to eighteen, because minimum wage will be going up during the budget year, and it will exceed what they originally budgeted.
So, the total's thirteen-five?
Thirteen-five, correct.
Yes.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, now you got it.
Discussion?
Yes, so, actually, this evening, we received, um, a letter from Mike Downs, thank you, regarding the North Ramford Police Department building, the old building with the estimate of what it will take to fund this building empty, about $6,000. So, we estimated at ten, so should we adjust this number?
Um, it's all a crapshoot. I mean, it's, we don't know if it's gonna be totally, if they're gonna be in there, we, we hope they're not in there in July, but if they're not moved into their building, they could still have stuff in there, they could still be partially in there, and...
I just, I get, I know it's a crapshoot, I understand, but...
I would agree that we don't know for sure that we're gonna be got it.
I mean, if you look at the partially occupied, you're at eighteen thousand five hundred.
Right, but the bottom line was six...
Six thousand.
Right, bottom line was six thousand empty. And we're going by July, this was going by July, so, I'm just bringing it up.
Yep, no, that's fine.
It's fair.
Yep. I'm comfortable sticking with ten.
As am I.
Yeah, I'm just, I just, I'd get it noted.
Yep, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And...
This is for July.
Okay. I, I, well, I'm not doing, 'cause this revenue changes on the sheet we have in our book, the sheet that was in our packet is not correct. So, this is...
The consult line is the correct one. Hold it up, let's see which one it is.
It's, it's, it's the one that's in this packet.
Okay, good.
Yeah, okay.
All right. No, it's here, this one here. This, Anthony?
Yeah, the old page packet.
Okay, so it says, uh, starting point on top in red.
Yes.
All right?
Should we do that all over?
No, because there is...
No. Yeah, we gotta start all over. Sorry.
I, I caught the ones that I... We might get better numbers, I don't know. Or we can double to get a even better mill rate.
All right.
Okay, so the last... The last, um, motion is for revenue changes, and it's in the fund balance, and it is, our budget originally had us using $800,000 from the fund balance to fund capital expenditures, and we just talked about this, what happened, by doing that much, it brought our fund balance percentage down to 10.5%, and we have a policy that we will not go below 10%, and this is what helps, helps us when we do financing of bonds and things like that. The council was not comfortable at being at such a low percentage, so we are not using the full $800,000 for capital expenditures. So, the original proposal was eight hundred. We are actually gonna put money back into the fund balance so that percentage can go up. So, this, um, motion is to adjust for the revenue balance, it's out of Fund 1,000, Department 4117, Line 49700, it's for capital appropriation, and it's a reduction of $385,000.
Correct.
Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. All right.
There we go.
So, that concludes any action on the general government side right now, and now we're gonna go to capital improvements projects. So, in the packet, we're, that says starting point, the packet that we were just using, if we go to the next page after...
Being an AI.
This is the revised capital, um, plan. So, um, do we have to make motions, Anthony, to add things, or can we just make a motion to accept as...
You set it up one last time? I mean, there's...
They don't fill it out.
Go to the July items, please.
Okay. Okay, so, there were two things that were added in here. One is the Townwide Maintenance Fund, which we established a few years ago, where we put $50,000 in there, and then Franny uses that as repairs and maintenance is needed on town buildings. Currently, we have a balance left in this year of $16,000, and, um, we are proposing to put in $10,000 from budget funds and $15,000 from the fund balance. The other item that we added is the additional cost of revaluation, which, guys, excuse me.
Sorry.
It's very hard to talk when someone else is talking. The other part of this revaluation is the other cost of the funding of this, which is $65,000. That is coming from budget funds. Police vehicles, um, we did the motion to put $95,000 in other funding, so that reduces budget funds for police vehicles to $31,500. Equipment reserve for the Fire Department was $325,000, that will now come out of fund balance instead of the budget funds. Extrication tools for the Fire Department originally was budgeted for LOSES funds, and Anthony got a ruling from the state that they would not, that would not be an acceptable use of the money, so that is no longer being funded. The next item is battery-powered tools for the Fire Department of $15,000, and we are going to fund that out of ARPA money. Going down, um, equipment reserve for Public Works, $219,000, that will be funded out of budget funds. Public Works, smaller equipment, $25,000 will be funded from the fund balance. Pavement overlay of, this originally was $200,000 out of budget funds, this will now be $50,000 out of fund balance and $45,000 out of LOSES money, so that's a reduction of $105,000 from, or, yes, a reduction of $105,000 from the original request. The next change is the replacement of the STW boiler. This originally was out of budget funds, this is now going to be out of ARPA funds for $12,000. Under Board of Ed, the Jerome Harrison HVAC system for the gym, this $140,000 was originally under budget funds, we are now going to fund this $50,000 out of ARPA funds, and we are re, going to reallocate the $90,000 that was given to them several years ago for paving, we are going to reallocate that to the HVAC system. And the paving for Jerome Harrison of $60,000, that was originally under budget funds. In talking to John Florio last, or, yes, last week, he gave a presentation on the cost of paving for Stanley T. and Jerome Harrison School, the total of those two projects together is a little over $400,000. I did have a conversation with the Superintendent of Schools, talked to him about the paving project, he said we could put it off for one year, and we are going to do a phase-in project, a, a phase-in and do it over three years, and so, we are going to commit, it's kind of like a lease payment, so $150,000 for the next three years to do both of the paving projects between TBS and Jerome Harrison. That will give them enough time to put it out to bid, divide the projects into phasing, and decide how they're going to do it. So, that's why the Superintendent was okay taking the $90,000 already allocated to them on paving and putting it towards the HVAC at Jerome. That was his top priority on their capital projects. So, those are the changes that we have on our capital program. So, we will end up using fund balance for $415,000 worth of project and budget funds for $325,500. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to say one thing. I requested that everybody sharpen their pencil, and they've done an excellent job.
Thank you. Yes, it was a very, we had to become creative on our budgets, and Department Heads, thank you very much for really working with us on here. So, yes, we, so, any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, we will not be doing the Board of Education tonight due to the fact of the solar credits, and our budget is not complete yet because we still have solar credits on our side, but at least we got the bulk of this done, and, um, we have to finalize the budget by next Tuesday, so, later on in the budget, we will have to make, we'll have to amend the budget and, um, do a new date to go on, to, to finish this. So, that concludes, um, budget work right now, and we will move on of, to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First one is Economic Development. Okay. Parks and Recreation, um, I was not able to attend their last one, we were in budget workshops, their next meeting is scheduled for next week, the 23rd. Police Commission.
Police Commission, Matt Onyekwe, Chief Lovelace, Department of Shoreline Computer Crimes Unit, has been very active in this area, and he shared data with the commission. The commission, as the traffic authority, received a request, and I don't think this is the first time, from the State Department of Transportation, to install a rumble strip on Route 139, the commission voted to reject that request, and if I remember correctly, it got rejected a couple of years ago. And if I remember correctly, it got rejected a couple of years ago. There's a real concern there, like the state is pushing that, but there are businesses close to the road and homes close to those.
22 that got it last time, but yes. Route 22, yeah.
But they did... I know they came one other time.
139 as well.
And I guess the highlight of the meeting was swearing in of Police Chief Lovelace and our new deputy police chief, Michael Pendleton. We're very proud of Michael.
Thank you. Fire Commission?
Fire Commission had their original meeting during one of our budget workshops. They moved it to a special meeting, which was April 11th. I was unable to attend. I was away. Anthony, is there anything on here? I did not get the meeting minutes yet, but I did get the agenda. I didn't see much on there for new business, just some unfinished business items. Anything you want to report on that?
No, you're good.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we'll report on our main meeting and the updates.
Exciting news, our new ambulance wasn't in service today.
Oh, there you go. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright, Planning and Zoning.
The next meeting's Thursday, April 18.
Okay. Finance Subcommittee. We did not meet this month. We had a lot going on with budget. So, our next meeting is scheduled for in May, which would be May 14th. Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
Our reporters and people are still waiting for Horizon to get going on those towers.
Okay.
Do we happen to know?
We don't have... I don't... Evidently, that's something going on between our company and Horizon. We're kind of out of that.
So, we have no jurisdiction over that?
No.
It's a privatized line.
We have no... That's private.
It's been almost a year when it was supposed to go live.
She has any information, I...
No. Okay.
Okay. Inland Wetlands.
Inland Wetlands met on March 27th and our town attorney was with us. The first thing that occurred was a discussion with the regional water authority. Evidently, they do, and Victor can help me with this too. They do a routine bridge inspection and during that inspection in town, they found an abandoned road north of the Northford Post Office. And when they did a study there in the river, they found a bridge that had collapsed into that river. I don't know where that is. It's a town abandoned road. And Victor, maybe you can help me with that.
I believe it's on water.
I don't know whose property it is.
Shawn's property?
On the spot. So, there... So, the bridge is on... It's on RWA property on the Farmington River, just north of the Northford Post Office. So, it's a... There's actually two corrugated metal pipe culverts associated with it. And it's just an old access road that hasn't been used in years. The actual access road is pretty much unidentifiable based on the vegetation that's grown over it. And the, I guess, the top structure of the bridge, the wood trestle portion has just collapsed into the river and is actually causing a blockage. So, it'll be a benefit to the floodplain there to clear that out.
And actually, that's not a regulated authority, therefore, they have the right to do that, correct?
Right.
You meant the Farm River, right?
The... What did I say?
Farmington.
Farm River, sorry.
Okay. Taking sure.
So, whose responsibility is to clear it? It's RWA.
So, right, RWA is planning on doing all the work and I've coordinated with them from a floodplain management standpoint, just to make sure they have the appropriate application in for that. And as part of their project, I'm hoping to try to at least have them clear out some of the roadbed that accessed that bridge. And that would, again, improve the flood capacity of that portion of the Farm River.
And we won't get built.
Waterfishing in Farmington.
There's no building to...
No, no, there's... It's solely a RWA project. They've kind of, you know, notified us just to let us know what's going on from a... I think mainly from the floodplain standpoint.
Thank you. And the other... A lot of time was spent discussing a water issue that's on private property. And at this point, the town really cannot get involved unless the owner of that property comes forth with an application and that's how he's going to use that property. It's an ongoing thing, but... That's it. Okay, thank you. Blueprint Committee?
We met the end of last week of March and we just... It was a light meeting. Many people weren't there and we just did some... We just conducted some mold business, cleaned up a few things. And our next meeting is scheduled next Thursday, April 25th.
Okay. And the Veterans Service Commission? I know they...
They met on the 9th, which, of course, we had one of our workshops, so I had intended to go, but I don't have any report on them, but I can provide reports in the future.
I know they... They're looking for an emblem, that they were looking at different design emblems to have...
They did and they settled on...
For their commission. And I know we did put money in the budget for the Veterans Service Commission also, so they do have some funding through the town.
Right, $2,000, I think.
I know, so... Okay. Town Managers Report.
I'd like to start by offering congratulations to Jim Lovelace. I was pleased to be on hand along with Mayor Angeloni, Councillor Diamond, Councillor Zampano and Councillor Miller, as he was officially sworn in as our police chief in the last Police Commission meeting. Jim has a long and distinguished career in law enforcement here in North Branford and we wish him nothing but the best as he officially assumes this critical role. And I would also like to offer congratulations to our new deputy chief of police, Michael Pendleton. The new deputy chief comes to us with a distinguished career with the Connecticut State Police and State's Attorney's Office, and we're looking forward to his bringing his extensive background and knowledge to this new role here in North Branford as we welcome him on our team. Jerome Harrison preschool students got a thrill today when the North Branford Public Works Department visited them and gave them a chance to learn about construction and then to get on some big equipment. Thanks to our team at Public Works, took the time to come out and spend time with these curious and smart preschoolers. Our annual Memorial Day Parade is at the end of next month with Gina Cox and Kathy Poston taking the lead once again in organizing our Memorial Day Parade. Local veterans and Veterans Service Commission member Chuck Larkins will be the parade grand marshal this year. The parade, which will be held on the Northford side of town this year, members of the council who wish to march in this year's parade should just confirm with my office at their earliest convenience. Park and Recreation are hosting the return of Junk in Your Trunk Saturday, April 27th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Stanley T. Williams Community Center, where you can sell tag sale items from your vehicle. Cost is $10 per parking space and bring your own table to display your goods. Register in advance at mbrecreation.com. We held a very successful free electronics recycling event last Saturday, April 13th, at Public Works facility at 290 Forest Road. Special thanks to the Solid Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee and our Public Works Department for coordinating in conjunction with Take2 Electronics and Recycling. And this year, we collected 9,192 pounds of electronics. Bulk pickup is currently going on this week, the day of your regular pickup. This includes tree limbs, tree branches, scrap wood, rugs, which all need to be less than four feet long and no thicker than four inches and need to be bundled and tied. Couches, mattresses, box springs, picnic tables and wooden furniture. No scrap vehicle parts, no home cleanouts. Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee will be holding their annual Earth Day on Wallfield, as we heard from them earlier today. They're holding it ahead of Little League's opening day, April 20th. And this year, the committee is reaching out to businesses, nonprofits, hobbyists and organizations that sell products and services that are eco-friendly. Committee will supply tables to participants so they can meet with residents while they walk the infield of displays. We've rescheduled the training event for members of elected and appointed town boards and commissions and their clerks for May 15th, 6:30 PM in the council chambers at Town Hall. Instruction will be on procedure, Robert's Rules of Order, Freedom of Information Act compliance. And the training will be conducted by town attorney Brian Leclerc and me. And membership RSVP to Gina in my office, who will be holding more of these training events before the year is out to attempt to reach everyone who needs the training. This week, from April 14th through the 20th, is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Our dispatchers are the unsung heroes of our public safety response and I hope residents will join us in recognizing their service to our residents this week. Dispatchers are on the front line of the front line and a critical first link in the chain of emergency response. So, thank you to our dispatchers. Work on the Mansfield Drive Bridge has begun as part of our bridge maintenance program. Bridges on Tommy's Path, Auger Road, Totucket Road, Mill Road, Circle Drive and Harrison Road will be scheduled in the near future. And prepping has begun for the paving of Enterprise Drive and Upper Turnpike Road. Paving is scheduled to take place there in the first two weeks of May. And since I don't have Charlie the Dog with me, I'm just going to conclude my report right there.
Okay. Permanent Project Billing Committee?
The North Branford Intermediate School Project, during the April break, water leak was detected and investigated. It was determined that the new roof was not the cause of the leaks. The cause is the exterior panel siding, which was originally installed upside down. QA&amp;M and Barrett, the roofing company, were instructed to investigate further and advise of cost to correct and provide additional waterproofing. Project is on schedule for an end of August completion.
It just keeps on getting to us.
Constant rewards on that one. North Branford High School, the storefront installation is 25% complete. Second floor drywall is 60% complete and the tile and ACT ceilings are starting next week. Project is on schedule for the September 11th completion date. And North Branford Police Department, EOC, the pavement binding has been installed and elevator delivery is scheduled this week. Interior finishes such as painting, ceiling grid and flooring are ongoing. Handicap doors are being installed and the project is on schedule for its completion date of June 13th. That concludes my report.
Mike, I have a question. Is there any way you could ask the Permanent Project Billing Committee to give us an idea if there'll be any money left over from the high school project? Just an estimate of what they think might be left over?
I can see if we can...
I know it's not... It's not a exact number, but could we get an idea?
I can see where we can punch up on that, yeah.
It's hard when you get it, but...
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alright, next item is citizen statements, petitions and correspondence. Do we have anything? Okay. Resignation and appointments, there are none. Next item is unfinished business. Item A, all of these have been tabled. The creation of the 1831 Committee, discussion and review of the Blight Ordinance in Town Center Committee, they are all tabled... They were all tabled to our main meeting. So, we're going to have to amend... I need a motion to amend the agenda to add item K, and that is to set a special meeting date for... To finalize the budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
I want to be opposed.
Okay. Alright. Now, on to new business. First item is application for ARPA nonprofit organization funding. So, we have one new application on here and that's from the Shoreline Chamber. And I know Dee could not make it tonight due to illness and they didn't know if they could have... I don't think there's anyone here from the Chamber.
No, I don't think so.
Right. Okay. So, the Chamber has asked... The application is in our packet. They've asked for $5,000 in funding. This is the last application. Applications were closed as of April 1st. So, we will have no more applications. We have two other ones pending that we heard from them at previous meetings. Water and Web's Waterbird Rehabilitation and the North Branford Land Conservation Trust. So, I just want to check with Anthony that we have $13,000 left in the fund? Okay.
13 in the nonprofit side.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought. Okay. So... Do I hear a motion to approve funding as follows? Water and Web's Waterbird Rehabilitation Center, $1,500. North Branford Land Conservation Trust, $7,000. And the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce for $1,000.
Motion?
Second.
So, the motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councillor Abelson. Any discussion?
Yeah, so, can I speak?
You certainly can.
So, we set it up with Dr. Schoonmaker with Scott. Yeah, we promoted him. You can contact him and he will set you up with somebody in the... In one of the students to create a website for you. That's one. I have been trying to contact you and cannot get through.
Is the answering machine on?
Well, it was full. So, you need to clear your messages. But that's... I mean, that's the best I can do for you. And like I said, Scott, more than happy to sit there and assist you. You just got to go and, you know, make an appointment and he'll... He knows of you and he's ready for you. Okay?
So, you're going to bring in someone like a student that's going to help with it as well? That's great.
He's going to set him up with a student and he's going to build the website for you.
I think that's a real... Thank you for putting some effort into getting it coordinated. I think that's great for both your organization as well as it's for one of our young students to get some experience on their resume, great for college applications. And half of these kids can build websites better than any one of us in the room. It's amazing what they do.
Would that website have somewhere a page where people can donate?
You have to sit... That's between you and the person who's building it and you have to explain to them exactly what you want and they'll do it for you.
Yeah, a lot of times, these things are templated already. So, what you... What they'll likely do, and I'm just... I'm coming from a very novice point of view, but I know a little bit about it. You know, anything like these... Let's just take, for instance, GoDaddy. Not that you're going to utilize that service, but GoDaddy will have a templated service where a lot of that functionality, when you purchase the website name and you purchase, you know, the hosting, they'll have these templates that already have that functionality. You choose the package and most of it will suffice exactly what you're looking for. So, I would suggest going to... And setting up an appointment with Mr. Schoonmaker and, you know, coming up with a team for you. Doctor Schoonmaker.
What's the reason you're not going to fund the mosaic?
There's only a limited amount. I mean, I don't want to speak... If you don't mind me speaking for the board, there's a limited amount of assets through ARPA and we're trying to... We're trying to make sure that many others are also getting... No one's gotten fully funded due to the fact that there's only a limited amount of assets to offer. So, we want to make sure that we're reaching the most organizations and helping them where we can.
Okay, because that one, you literally buy it and as far as I know, the other website, you have to pay... You have to pay every month or every year or whatever. This is only one time you own it.
Well, you probably own the site. Someone still has to host it, though.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's always going to be a hosting cost. But I think that's probably appropriate to have a conversation with those folks and see, you know, what the best way to go about it is. It's a great, you know, a great resource for your organization. We're excited to see what you do with it and let us know, you know, if there's other areas where we can help promote that in the future. But I'm excited to see what happens with it. It's going to be a great coupling between our students and the talent that they have and your organization. So, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And the students that, from what Scott has said, the student, whoever it is, is well-versed in building websites. That he promised me. So, you feel comfortable when you go to talk to him and he sets you up with them, right? And it's a... What are we, 17, 18-year-old? They run rings around us. So, go do it and you'll be surprised.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. So, there's still some... There's a little bit of money left in the fund and since there's no more applications, we can go back to the other applications that have come in. They don't have to present again. On All the King's Horses, which was the first application that we received, her application was for $6,300 and we funded $5,000 originally on there. So, do I hear a motion to fund All the King's Horses for an additional $1,300? Second. Discussion?
I just think it's a, this, as you said, this was the first. So, to be the first is good and sometimes bad because, you know, we had to be conservative. But this will finish what they needed to do with that particular truckload of hay, feed. So, we thank them for bringing that application as well, and we look forward to seeing how that develops for them.
Okay.
So, that's the end of ARPA, right?
Um, well, it'll be for the nonprofits after we, we finish this. So, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And the last amount of money that's left in the ARPA non-fund, nonprofit fund is for $2,200. Do I hear a motion to award this to the North Branford Food Pantry?
Second.
Discussion?
I just bring up that, and I bring this up anytime I bring up the Food Pantry. I think sometimes people forget that North Branford, there are people that are still food insecure and how important this service is. So, one, thank you for doing what you're doing, folks at Food Pantry. Two, this is going to a fantastic organization. Three, let's all try to pitch in as citizens, and remember that we can, we can donate, we can donate our time. It's a great cause, so, you know, reach out to the folks there and see where we can help out. But I just want to put my two cents in there, we're excited to be able to add some extra dollars to that.
They have bins in the front.
Yep.
You can donate right at the, right in Big Y.
Sure, too.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So, that now depletes our ARPA nonprofit funding. We have given it all out on there. So, those that are here tonight, that just received funding tonight, the Finance Department needs a W-9 form from, for, from you filled out, and you can submit that, and they will cut the checks, correct, Anthony?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, if you get that to the Finance Director, they will cut the checks for you. We will have check presentations on all of these, plus the ones that we approved at our last meeting at our next meeting in May.
Do we have a, and I apologize if I'm stepping out of bounds in asking this, but Anthony or Rose, is there a timeframe where someone has to, you know, you have to make this move in order to get the check or it gets forfeited? Because there's going to be a period of time that...
There wasn't anything in our application that said that.
Maybe that's something we update, because the ARPA funds have to be spent at a certain period of time. So, we want to make sure that we have some.
We're paying them as long as they give us the documentation.
Well, it's not necessarily that, I meant more as if they drag their fee to go.
No, they, well, once we allocate it to them, it's done.
Yeah, we're not monitoring after this.
They don't, if it takes them two years to spend it, it doesn't matter.
Well, not spend it, receive it, I meant, right.
But they'll, they'll have it received.
I mean, the requirements that are on us to expend it will have been met by us giving them the check. So, even if they held on to it for two years, for hypothetically, that wouldn't be in violation.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you.
So, thank you. All right. Onto the next item is approval of fair housing resolution. So, there's something in our packet.
I'll make a motion to adopt the California Fair Housing Resolution exactly.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Abelson. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is additional ARPA funding. So, there's two items. Anthony, do you want us to put on here the ones that we approved?
You basically did that on capital.
When we did the capital, so we don't have to do it? Okay, that's fine with me, as long as you're covered. Okay. So, additional ARPA funding. So, the first one is fire department suits, which there is something in our packet at our table. I believe it's just...
I'll read that.
The quote says, this, this covers the cut that we made in the budget from technical supplies from the fire department. Their original budget was $65,000, and we, what they were going to, the big item they were buying out of that was replacement of fire suits. And they had 10 to 12 to replace this year, and so, Anthony got us a quote. We did $35,000, so whatever they can buy for $35,000.
So, this quote just indicates one complete suit, correct? Okay, that's where I was confused, we saw it in the one. Okay. I'll make a motion, is there a stipulated motion or?
No.
So, I'll make the motion to award ARPA funds to cover the cost of the fire department.
Well, it's for 35,000.
For 35,000 for equipment in the form of suits, pants, and coat, and jackets, coats.
Okay. Motion has been made by Deputy, a second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Palladino. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And the second one is public works fencing. So, that's in our packet, it's on page 65 of our packet. Yes. So, I don't know, either Danny or Franny, if you just want to just give a little update as to what this is.
Yeah, this fencing is really for the public park. You know where the soft bulkhead is? Where you take it down, six foot fence down, and where you put the door fence that we have in here. Down, kind of down, 10 feet off of our driveway.
Okay.
Going in.
So, so it'll match the other side on the, I mean, that type of fence?
I'm actually going to put one all the way down 22 to the farm house also.
Great.
The money from our other project here.
Okay.
The whole, most of the front of that whole property.
Versus the Jersey Barrier concrete blocks? Okay, that's good. All right, I'll make a motion to award public works fencing, ARPA money is in the amount of $18,675 and zero cents for the use of Totucket Park fencing through Kilford Fence Works.
A second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Miller. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Can I just ask, Anthony, is there any money left now in the ARPA fund?
$21,321.
$21,321?
Yes.
Okay.
$21,321.
Yeah.
So, can we discuss this for the $21,000?
Sure.
Well...
I might want your dog.
Huh? Are you looking at me?
No.
Oh, you went like this, I thought you were talking to me.
Talking to Marie.
Talking to me. I asked a question about the request from the superintendent for ARPA funding for the storage building that he wanted to put on the theater. And...
We do understand that it's in his budget, and he is to take it out.
He, I, I was told that it was originally in the budget, in their capital budget.
It is. Yep, right, right. Yeah, yes, it appeared in.
And then I was also told that the Board of Ed had not voted on that, and it had come directly from the superintendent. The Board of Ed had voted to put it into the budget. I then had a discussion with Rose about that, and one of the things that she suggested, and that's why I asked Mike if there was any money left, oh, did they think there might be some money left in the high school project? I, I think that if we're having a new building, and we have this junky old, whatever you call it, thing where they store that equipment now, if we can, this would be the time to do it. And I asked if we could do it through ARPA funds, obviously, there's not enough left in the ARPA funds. But I'd like to make a pitch for that, and I, hopefully, that that might be something we could do if there are leftover funds in the high school.
Is this something that they're still thinking about utilizing the students in industrial arts to construct?
Yes, they're going to use the students to build it, but they need money out of it because of the materials. I think originally it was 90,000, and I just saw a different number somewhere.
It was 95, it went to 80, and now it's back to 95, so, not really sure what the number is.
It's the cost of the materials.
I really don't know what the number is, because it just, it keeps moving.
Can we, for the $21,300, can we do that for the students for the high school?
It's not enough for the project.
Not enough.
But to give them something for, to start the project.
But how are they going to finish it, though?
They'll have to figure it out.
Well, no, we can't, you...
It's just like doing, it's just like the money that we've given away to fund some of these nonprofits. You know, not all the money that they can, they have is to pay for whatever project they, they want to do. And they're going to have to figure out to take the money and figure out on, where to get the other money. I know the Board of Education is tight, it's only, you know, it's $21,300. And it would be going to the students of the, of North Branford.
Well, but we have, yeah, but we have no information in regards to it.
Has they provided any type of plans or anything like that? Because it is important to see, you know, there has been some fluctuation. I'm not against having this building constructed, and I think if the students could do it, it's, it's both worthy as the end result of all the experience.
They can go and they can raise the money or whatever, but I think it would be a start for them. And it's $21,300 that's left, and...
I think we need more information.
Well, I think we should mention to the superintendent, you should ask the board to put it on the next agenda, so they could...
Yeah, it should be nice to know where it comes from. That number comes from, again, I'm not against it, so I don't want it to come off as if I'm, you know, shouting against it. But where's this 80,000 or 95,000 come from?
Jeff, I have no idea.
Well, that's what I didn't know.
I didn't see, I didn't see the project. I have no idea, no one has seen the project.
It's that's what we need to know.
And we don't, we have no idea, but it's whatever, it's what's left in the ARPA funding, and I, I think that it should go to the students of North Branford.
I would be all for that.
For that particular project, like I said, it's a start. If they want to go and fundraise for the rest of the money, for whatever it's going to be, if it's, you know, they need another $70,000, hey, I have no idea where they're going to come up with the money, absolutely not, but it is a start.
I think we need something conceptual in order to...
I would suggest that we tell, ask the superintendent to put it on the next agenda for the Board of Ed, so they can be more specific. Specific for us, maybe show us a plan.
Right, because it's a, it's a very, very tight budget this year, and they may not have the additional funding within their budget to fund the additional monies to make it work. So, what will we do with the 20,000? Because the 20,000, you know, it's, what are you going to have, a frame?
It's a start for funding.
You know, we, we don't have to spend the 25,000 tonight, right? So, why can't we just...
Right.
We don't have to do anything tonight, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And like, to your question before, Marie, maybe we'll find out there might be some money left over from the high school of the 80 million dollars.
That's why I asked.
Hopefully, there might be a little bit of, some crumbs left over, you know?
Yeah, it'd be nice to focus.
Right, that's why.
I think we all have our thoughts on, if there is some money left over, that area of the building can be looked at, that, possibly a field, you know, to have after, or a turf field in there, so that whole area.
Take all the crumbs, I think, yeah.
Okay. So, we are going to move on to item D, taxpayer refund approval process.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask Tax Collector Jerry Winnick, and the Director, Miss Pizzito, they have a plan on potentially speeding up the tax refund process.
After the last meeting, I think it was Tom Josem Cando.
Guys?
Had requested information about the tax rebate process, and so I went back to the Tax Collector, Jerry Winnick, and she did some research on other towns, how they handle it, and she has some discussion points and possibly a change, like to enact the expedite process.
Yeah, because I know it takes some taxpayers, it takes them like two months, sometimes longer, to get their refunds back as it comes here first, by the time they send everything. So, I think a lot of this was in the packet that you guys had gotten. So, I did a little research on some of the towns, and it's where the council approves somebody like the town manager or the finance, and/or the finance director, to sign off on any refunds that are under a certain amount. So, my thought was 5,000, because half is probably around $4,000 on an average for somebody's home. That's an average. So, if somebody ends up paying twice because they're refinancing, somebody, they buy a house, the attorney pays it, then they pay it. So, you end up with an extra payment. So, to refund it, now it could take two to three months before they get their money back, because they have to sign a form, they have to send it back. We have to get everything together, we have to check it, make sure nothing else has been done to the account. We get it ready, we send it off, and then we send it to you guys a month later. So, it could be a couple of months before, and then we have to process everything into Munis to request a refund.
Munis works. No, same thing going to Munis.
So, it does take quite a while. So, if we can speed it up, the form was actually, these are samples on this here. So, anything, say, under $5,000 would be approved, and we can do it more than once or twice a month. Get those done, get those out of the way, get them, checks requested. And on every single one, it would actually be a, instead of you signing the form itself, you would sign a spreadsheet, and the forms would be behind it. So, that would be the documentation behind it. So, this would say, and on every single one, it would say, action taken by governing body. So, this would actually be on every single one, even years down the road, to say, on this day, it was approved, that anything under, say, $5,000 is approved by town manager or finance director, and/or...
So, other towns are doing this?
Yes, there are actually, I have samples of like four of them. One of them does anything under 10,000, one does anything under two, some do under 1,000.
What's the negatives, just to play devil's advocate, what's the negative side of it? Where, what can go, come undone by doing it this way? Like, could something be missed, or, I'm just trying to get an understanding of it.
No, because it would actually be better, because we do have a lot of people that call and say, where's my refund?
Yeah.
I suppose, is there a risk that, that you give a refund that's not due, I guess?
No, we actually check them.
Okay.
We, they're checked like three or four times before they're even sent to be approved here.
Okay.
Then they're checked again before they're even put in for a check request, to make sure that it wasn't transferred to another account, or if something else had happened, and, you know, they bounced a check or anything, because sometimes it could take a while to get a bounced check back, too. So, this is something we keep checking, and it's checked all the time. So, this would be something like, say, on the first of every month, we say, okay, we have 10 of them under 5,000, we get them ready, and within a couple of weeks, we can get them ready to go without your approval. So, but it has to be up to you to make that decision, to see if, to have somebody else sign off.
I just think 5,000 is too high.
What I don't recall is, I don't recall the tax refunds coming in for thousands of dollars. It's always, well, at least I know, always notice, or at least I think I noticed, is like 500, 600, 400.
This sample here, there's one for over $5,600. I have another one for five. We've had some that are even higher than that. The reason I went with five, I mean, even if I went with four, on an average, we have about 5,473 accounts. That includes businesses and residential. And half is around $3,700 for half of your property.
For real estate taxes.
Correct. And that's actually about, almost 5,000 of them is under $5,000 for half. The full amount is like 7,300.
Well, we could pick any number we want, really.
Right, they're, they're... Yeah.
Streamline it, it would streamline...
You know, even if you went to three or 35, it was just a, a figure I just put out there.
There was only one town at 10,000, the rest were 2,000 or less.
Yeah.
So, so, I mean, I would, I would be 2,500.
I didn't go.
If you get 2,500, if you look at the ones that are on tonight's agenda, that would cover all of them, because the highest one is 2437. And then most of the other ones, like you said, are a couple of dollars, a couple of hundred.
Yeah, cut it in half. Yeah, cut it in half, $2,500.
If we could streamline a lot of this, it's a good idea, as long as we, as long as we have a control.
Right.
Yeah, this way, it's like, and if, and if it was something that is over that certain amount, of course, it comes to you to be signed off on. It's not.
I'm comfortable with 25 myself.
So I'm reading the motion, and it says, you know, adopts the attached refund approval process, but there is no dollar amount in here, so we...
We had that in the motion.
You would just have to make that, because it doesn't, there is no dollar amount in here, so...
I'm happy to make that motion.
Okay.
All right. Be it hereby resolved that North Branford Town Council, on today's meeting, the, what is it, the 16th of April adopts a, at a dollar amount of $2,500, the attached refund approval process for the tax office.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Palladino. Any further discussion?
Did you say the 15th or the 16th?
15th.
Okay. I thought I heard 15.
Cut it out, then, I don't know.
Thank you.
Rose, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Since, Rose, tell me if I can ask this question, since we're talking about taxes and refunds and everything. We haven't talked about it in a while, but the delinquent taxes, there was a bunch of properties that we had asked Brian to go after, and we hadn't heard or talked about that in a while. It's kind of just been lost. I was wondering where we are with all those.
We met with the tax collector and the finance director several months ago. We sent out demand letters, and we've instituted tax foreclosure actions against a number of taxpayers, some of whom have already come in and made payments, or are trying to get on payment plans, so we're being aggressive with that.
Good, thank you.
I can give you a full report if you need, I just don't have it in front of me, the number of cases, but...
At the next meeting?
Yeah, if you want, sure.
Thank you, President.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Financial reports.
Financial report for March 31 comparative to March of last year. The trend continues where we are exceeding revenue 90.9% of the budget current year, compared to 88.2% last year, and also positive on the expense side of the house, we only spent 71.3% compared to 75.0% last year at this time, and the largest over expenditure remains the emergency management for the situation with the MBIS generator. Aside from that, the report's unremarkable.
Okay. Next is appropriation transfers.
You have three transfers in front of you, one from the police department, one from the public works department, and one from the library department. This is the format, we're going to put them in now, it'll be easier to read, more of a vertical format versus that landscape format. If there's any questions, those departments are here tonight, if you have any questions specific to their transfer.
We're doing them in a single motion?
We can. Yeah, there... It's, it's on page 73 of our packet, and they're just all listed there, so...
Resolved that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town managers and the treasurer, finance director, as stated.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions? Or anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Contingency transfers.
This is an interesting one.
Yes.
Back in 2003, when the state was widening Route 80, the question was sidewalks, no sidewalks. We agreed to put sidewalks from Commerce Drive basically over to Company One Firehouse, so they're just town sidewalks. The bill...
It's an extensive route.
Oh, it's huge.
Yeah.
It's huge. The bill came in, and at the time Kurt Weis had approached the state and said, we don't have anything budgeted this year, could we hold off, send us a bill next fiscal year, which would have been 2004, '05? They said, okay. We never saw a bill. So suddenly, about three months ago, a girl calls up and says, to Victor, our lovely town engineer, that there's a $17,000 bill that you owe us for redhead sidewalks. I'm like, okay, well, they're probably quite broken by now, it's been, you know, 20 years and such. So in discussing it, the, obviously, the agreement was signed by the town at that time that we were on the hook for our piece of the sidewalk project, so there's no denying that we owe the bill. So in talking with the manager, it was cleanest just to take it out of contingency and put this to bed.
Question for either of you or for town attorney, is there, like, any type of timeframe that we're subject to that we can, is there statute of limitation of this bill? I mean, it's 20 years later.
The bill is from the state of Connecticut?
Correct.
So you have, you know, you have your six-year statute of limitations on contracts. That said, I'm sure you're looking for more money from the state of Connecticut, which could prove to be problematic if you...
Just stiffen them?
I have a feeling. They were a vendor you were never going to deal with again, perhaps?
We don't want to.
Got to pick your fights.
Unless you tell them you don't have the money this year, another 20 years...
Yeah. Yeah. We want to go on a 20-year plan?
So we're going to skip that million dollars we're going to give you.
Yeah.
You see your ARPA money, maybe.
Okay. So...
I think we're stuck.
Yes.
That's ironic. Yeah, you can get on that dumpster fire.
Resolved that the town manager hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency account $1,000 et cetera, in the amount of $17,135.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. So if you just look on the, just, this was a note due to our budget when we did before. So contingency, we start out at $175,000. You notice we had two huge items, $60,000 and $25,000, which are, you know, the $60,000's already covered in our contract negotiations, and the $25,000 that we paid, and now this 17, these two are like anomalies that we would pay out of here, so I think reducing our contingency amount was the right thing to do, and we just have to be very prudent in what we decide, or what is going to come forward on contingency. And if it's not budgeted, we have to really, department heads, town manager, whatever, you really have to think twice, because we've reduced that amount, and we need to become very fiscally responsible, looking at that moving forward on there, instead of having a large amount and being able to fall back on it. Okay. Approval of tax refunds.
It's Tom's thing.
You don't want to approve anybody's tax refund.
Do I hear a motion to approve the tax refund?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made by Councilor Zampano, seconded by Councilor Abelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We can't do "I" and we can't do "J," those are tabled, so the next one is, we need to set a date for our special meeting, and it can be no later than next Tuesday, the 23rd.
Are we meeting tomorrow night?
Do we have a meeting tomorrow? I don't know.
Anthony will have to...
Anthony has to have time to make sure he goes through all the credits and, and the information is correct, because it will have, it has a major impact on the budget.
We have to be here tomorrow night? Anthony can get through it, Ben, he works through the night.
We want to give it him an extra day or two?
Well...
I've got training tomorrow and Thursday.
You miss training?
Okay. So then, so then we just stick with next Tuesday, the 23rd, for 6:30 on there.